Mission to order. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the summary minutes. Are there remarks, or is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing items. Number two, application PDD 08 1A, Roger Symson, requesting approval of an amendment of a preliminary final plat development for Golden Eagle Estates, addition number five. Is there staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we'll start out with just a little bit of background here. And this is an aerial photo, and this is a 2010 aerial photo, so that if you've driven into that neighborhood here recently, there's a lot more homes located there than what you're seeing on this aerial photo. But the subject property that we're talking about is outlined faintly in blue in that area. And I think it's also important to remember that located right in here in a sandwich is a neighborhood park site that has frontage here on Red Hawk Lane and then comes back and over to the levee. So you've got platted lots here for single-family homes, a park site, then you have this lot here, and this area to the south is Golden Eagle Estates, number four. John, could you put up the slide that kind of summarizes the development plan? So in 2008, the planning commission reviewed the final plat, the overall development plan for Golden Eagle Estates, number five, which primarily includes Wildcat Circle, but also includes some lots on Red Hawk Lane and on Wayne. And within that subdivision, there were 79 building lots proposed. 68 of those were for single-family dwellings. We had six lots for two-family dwellings. Those are backed up against the levee. And if you look at the Ring Road, which is Wildcat Circle, the far east ring, there's six lots that back up to the levee that were approved for two-family dwellings. And that is similar to what you see in River Trail to the south, which also has some lots that back up to the levee on Saddle Brook. Then there are two lots, which are directly east of the substation there on Wayne, the West Star substation, and those are zoned for up to three units per building. And then we have the property that we're talking about today, which was approved for up to four individual duplex units. And so our subject today is Lot 49, Block 1. We also have a lot in the subdivision that has a substation on it, and a lot that is dedicated to a public park. So the other aspects of the subdivision is we have about two-plus acres that are devoted to a neighborhood park. There's a drainage right-of-way on the west side for expansion and improvement of the Huntington ditch up to the Old River Ox Bow. There's an easement for West Star for their substation. There's a 100-foot wide utility easement that runs from west to east across the subdivision that has the high-voltage transmission lines. There's another easement for transmission lines that come out of the substation. And then you've got some drainage right-of-way for the south half of the Ox Bow, which is south of the Red Fox Lane area. So, John, if you can go to the vicinity map that has the zoning on it, you may need to blow that up a little, if it's possible. But what I want to try to focus on is what's happening on Wayne Avenue and Red Hawk there, because that's kind of the gateway into Golden Eagle, number five. You've got a single-family dwelling here at Falcon View and the corner there on Wayne. Mr. Boss, the owner of that, purchased part of this R2 lot here and added it to his lot for a garage. This lot here, at the request of the original developer, was zoned to have a duplex on it. It was 155 feet wide, now it's 100 feet wide, but it is zoned for a duplex. These lots right here are zoned that they could have a triplex, or up to a triplex, on them. And then this is the lot we're talking about, which is today zoned for four individual duplex units. And of course, the goal at the time, in 2008, when Golden Eagle, number five, was all laid out, was to get all the parameters established. And so if you went in there and bought a lot to build a home, then presumably you could find out what was the zoning and what was allowed around you. So nothing in this subdivision has changed since 2008. This request comes from Roger Simpson, who is the developer of the Eagle Crest Twin Homes farther to the south. And maybe the current owners can clarify that for us, but he is, what we understand, has an option to purchase this from Golden Eagle Estates Limited. And he is proposing to construct a project that he's calling Eagle's Nest, and his proposal is to construct three fourplex on that property instead of the four duplexes, which would increase the housing count from eight to 12, and also how that is packaged. So that is a request that is before you today. You can go back to that, John. This is the concept drawing that we have. What we do not have at this time is any floor plans or elevation drawings depicting the exterior. So I cannot tell you whether this is multi-level, or whether it's all slab-on-grade. I can tell you the square footages. But what we're talking about here is an increase in density, and because of that, we sent a notice out to the surrounding property owners, and also placed a notification sign on the property. And your purpose here today as a planning commission is to determine whether the changes proposed by the applicant going from eight to 12 units would have a negative impact on neighboring properties or property owners. And there was much discussion about this particular lot by the planning commission in 2008, and actually, I think there were three or four public hearings that the planning commission held, and this was the last piece of the puzzle. And in your packets was what was submitted in 2008, and I think you have that, John, that had some floor plans and elevation drawings and all. And so the planning commission saw this as an elevation of what would be built here if it was allowed for multifamily housing. Do you have the site plan as well, John? So what you'll see here is a similar proposal to what you see in front of you today. And in 2008, a majority of the planning commission thought that this was too dense and was out of character with the surroundings. And so rather than approving this proposal, which was essentially, at one time, was four fourplexes, then three fourplexes, the planning commission felt that the housing unit should not contain more than two living units per building or dwelling. So this plan was presented to the planning commission in 2008. Planning commission at the time felt it was too dense and did not approve it, but did allow up to four duplexes to be built there. So if we go back to this plan, it does fit into what R2 allows. It would have 12 dwelling units instead of the eight currently permitted. If you built out the approved plan, essentially you'd have about 7,500 square feet of lot area for each living unit. If you built this plan, it would be reduced down to 5,000 square feet. This particular lot has 142 feet of frontage on Red Hawk Lane, so it is wider than a typical lot. The planning commission at the time required a 30-foot setback on Red Hawk Lane, and that's so it would match up with the houses to the south, which have a 30-foot setback. And of course, there's a requirement that each living unit provide 24, or each have two parking spaces, so at 12 units, that's 24 surface parking spaces. And that's what you see depicted on the plan. And then there's also a requirement that if you have multifamily housing, you've got to have a landscape buffer between your housing and any single-family dwellings.
So when we talk about planned development districts, that allows you to customize a zoning district for a particular plan and to modify different requirements. But we've reviewed this, and there's nothing about the proposed plan that would require any modifications to the standards for setbacks or any other zoning items. So as we indicated, this property's been vacant since time of plating in 2008, and it's our understanding, the applicant believes there's more of a market for the fourplex units than for four individual duplexes, and that is the reason for the request. And as far as the character of the neighborhood, I think you can see that it is predominantly single-family, and the primary issue is whether the plan is a substantial change in character from what was originally proposed with the four duplexes. And that's primarily a function of the density. We cannot get into the compatibility as far as architectural appearance or design, because we don't have that information. And I think that would be something that would be helpful to make that judgment. The other issue is landscaping or buffering, and that's often a tool that's used to create buffers between different types of housing. There's no real issue as far as access.
Dean, pull that down just a little bit, so it's more in line with your mouth, maybe, that's helped it come through a little more consistently. Thanks.
Yes, I seem to be cutting in and out. So one thing that was discussed when this was originally proposed was quite a bit more density than what we're seeing today. And I think it's important to understand that this site is a half-mile from Ohio, it's a half-mile from Magnolia, so you have to get here through a residential street system. Also, as we look to the city's water distribution system, the best fire flows are on Ohio and on Magnolia, and as you get more remote from those locations, it's hard to achieve the fire flows you need to have a lot of residential density. And so if we look at this property from a fire flow and a vehicle access standpoint, it's not ideal for very dense or intense multifamily development. So in summary, if we just look at the density of this site by itself and take the acreage, it computes to a density of nine units per acre of land area, and in most of the rest of the subdivision, the density is three units per acre of land area, so this would be triple what you have in the remainder of the development. So we've outlined some of the residential development policies. This could almost be looked at as infill development, because so much of the single-family area is already developed. And it also points out that where possible, multifamily housing should be located on the edge of residential neighborhoods and near other major traffic generators. And so where you see the Eagle Crest Retirement Community, which is close to a major arterial street, is where we would really expect to see the higher densities, and it becomes more problematic for access and fire flows the farther inward you move from our arterial system. So if at the conclusion of the public hearing, you think that this request would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property, and the plan submitted would be compatible, you could approve or recommend approval of the requested plan amendment. You could postpone consideration of this application to allow architectural elevations and floor plans to be submitted for your review. You could postpone consideration to allow modifications to be made to this site layout that you see in front of you. You could postpone consideration if you don't feel like you have enough information to make a recommendation, or you could recommend denial of this amendment if you believe that the site layout or building design would be incompatible with the surrounding single-family area. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have about Golden Eagle, number five, or this particular request.
Any questions of staff?
Dean, on the original city, or the planning commission, was it to fit four duplexes in there? So that was, let's take Arrowhead, for example. Is that what they originally had in mind? And I'm talking about Arrowhead off of, is that Scott Street?
Yes, it's at the end of Linda Lane there, before it connects into Quail Meadows Estates.
Yeah, I'm just doing measurements on here, and if a standard lot's even 80-foot to put a duplex on, that's 320 feet. There's 317 feet across the front. I'm just trying to figure out what the original intent was that they approved it to even to allow four duplexes there in the first place.
I'm not sure that either the planning commission knew for sure, or that even staff knew for sure that you could physically fit four duplexes in a line there, but essentially, that's all the density that the planning commission felt was appropriate. And so if somebody, nobody, to my knowledge, has tried to lay duplexes in there, and it could very well be the case that only three reasonably-sized duplexes would fit there. And that's okay, because it fits within the parameters. But the big issue at the time seemed to be that duplexes, or two-unit townhomes, were not viewed as multifamily, and the fourplexes were. And so that was all that the planning commission at the time was comfortable with. That was not requested or proposed by the developer. It was imposed by the planning commission.
Todd, if I might, I think that some of that had to do with the numbers that the planning commission felt comfortable with, in terms of people in that space, and then also their relationship to the other homes around there.
And there was a lot more background to that, but the minimum fire flow requirements for fire protection for four-unit buildings is much higher than it is for two-unit buildings, and that entered into that a little bit, because this subdivision is at the end of the system, and the amount of fire flow, water flow there is really not sufficient to deal with multifamily apartments of any scale. And so the planning commission felt that confining it to no more than two living units in a building was more compatible with the prevailing conditions.
I just want to be clear, so that I understand what is there now. I physically can't figure out how you can put four duplexes even on, I mean, if you got a 30-foot setback, and you need...
You probably couldn't unless you used the little L shape of this lot that is kind of off the picture. But you could not line up four duplexes in a row from west to east and make it all fit. I would agree.
Other questions for staff? Could we hear from the applicant? And Tim, please, your name and address.
My name is Tim Hausen. I was one of the two original developers on the entire plat. Hope I don't get this straight here in a minute. Anyway, there were a number of man-made, as well as God-made obstacles we had to work around on that particular lot. First of all, we got into the core of engineers on the 1,000-foot line, and the Ox Bow in there. The Ox Bow created a lot of depth on that lot that's adjacent to the Ox Bow, which it's this lot. The core of engineers on the 1,000-foot, between 500 and 1,000, well, 1,000-foot on down, there's basement requirements on additional steel and footings and all that stuff. So that caused the Golden Eagle Estates 5 development, which, to the north primarily, on Wildcat Circle, caused a lot of those homes to come in a little bit cheaper, because between 500 and 1,000 feet, they've got to spend approximately $4,000 to put a basement in. 500 feet and under, our engineers said it's 50% more. So if you've got a $24,000 basement, it's going to cost you $36,000. Now, some people are even quoting higher than that. So what that did was cause your housing to be a little cheaper on the east end of Wildcat Circle. Lot of homes are going up in slabs, because they're a little cheaper to put in than a basement, when you get into that 500-foot and under. So that influenced a lot of the housing to the north side of this. West Star, when we did this, wanted 100-foot easement, north to south, across the entire three-tenths of a mile, from Clearover by Huntington, east to the dike. They had a point-to-point easement, from this oak tree to that oak tree, that was established in 1937. They said it was a blanket easement, but anybody that has any common sense knows it's not a blanket easement. So anyway, that 100-foot easement in there, going north to south, affected the lots on the south side of Wildcat Circle, on the loop. What we did was we created deeper lots on that, 160-some feet deep, on the west side of Red Hawk. In fact, they were all that way. But then the city wanted some dedication for parks, so they could access the park area that was dedicated in the River Trail subdivision, directly east of this track, on the other side of the tall trees in there. And we recognized that, and of course, in an easement area, you can't put any structures. So this big, wide easement running east to west down through there was creating an issue. Homeowners on the south side of Wildcat Circle could not put shops, et cetera, on that easement. And technically, not fences, but I think the city's been a little cooperative on that. And so that created an issue over there on that side. On the south side of the high-power lines, it also created an issue, because you've got a no-build area there. Well, when the city wanted park area, we turned around, and they needed access off Red Hawk to get to the park area on the River Trail, plus what we were dedicating. We originally, I think, had a, I can't remember the exact dimension, about a 50-foot north-to-south strip, going along the high-power lines, running east off of Red Hawk, back to a wider area for the park that we dedicated, along with that, which would have joined the River Trail Park Track. They came back and asked for a 100-foot wide strip, and so that's what we wound up with, 100-foot wide, which decreased the north-south distance on this lot to, I think, 143, if you look at this. Now, it's 143, or 142 by 313, 142 on Red Hawk. If you look at those dimensions, you, it becomes complicated to lay stuff out in there. We originally came at the planning and zoning, I think when we were tail-ending on this, on three-fourplexes, and our concept that we presented to them was that this lot is L-shaped, and I hate to move my head, because this mic's so funny. The portion that comes to the south, next to the Ox Bow, what the builders' idea was to cut that off, make that a rectangular lot, cut that off, and give that back to the granny cherry, because even though the Ox Bow is a low area, there's a low area going uphill as you go on that south leg. I mean, it's still low ground. It's not good to build on that, and some of the things been brought up about, yeah, you'd have to go on that ground and build it up. It's not good to fill and then build a structure on it, like that, that much fill. It wasn't our idea to put four fourplexes. The planning commission came in with that, and I want to correct Dean a little bit. We had a big issue on this, on the water supply. And if I remember correctly, we were willing to bring an 8-inch line up, and I think that's what happened. I think we got an 8-inch line brought up from Magnolia instead of a 6-inch, which is normally what you see in a residential area. The difference between 6-inch and 8-inch is substantial. You simply square your diameter to know the difference, if pressure and everything else is the same. Pi radius squared, that's all the same. So 6 times 6, 36. 8 times 8, 64. So you have a lot more water on an 8-inch line. I'm pretty sure that we had an 8-inch line coming from the south from Magnolia, clear up to that intersection, because of this very purpose. Four duplexes will not work on that lot. If you go east to west, left to right, a duplex would be at least 60 feet long, and you'd have to lay them in there east to west. If you laid them in there north to south, I don't think it would look very good, because they'd be long, narrow units. To me, it'd look more like army barracks. And you've got a 30-foot setback off of Red Hawk, and 30-foot green area between the duplexes, if you build them. So you've got 4 times 30, it'd be 120, and 4 times 60, it'd be 240. That's 360 feet. The lot's 313 feet, east to west. The cost of the lot, I think, is right at $100,000, and you get into fairly high costs on a lot, because what happens is your infrastructure, the paving and everything else going back there, the further you go back, the more expensive it gets, and putting in your taps to each building. It adds up. It's a lot more expensive to go to four buildings than it is to three. Now, I realize that's not anybody else's problem. Now, the zoning in the area, this was set in motion from day one. We did this because of that long corridor going along the high-power lines. That's why the two lots east of the substation, as well as this lot, are R2. That's why the lots backed up to the dike on Wildcat Circle on the east end were zoned R2, because of the basement restriction getting very expensive. Now, Dean made a statement earlier, and wanted to say that he is going to build slab-on-grade, but he was going to elevate it. And so it's not going to be multi-level, it's just one level. Trying to make sure I cover everything here. But the feasibility on building four duplexes in there is not there. Now, the whole issue on this is what's the best concept to go in there? Not a matter of whether it will go in there. I mean, you could have somebody go in and build the four duplexes. But the parameters of what could happen on that could be humongous. of what could happen on that could be humongous. Simpson, as some of you know, is a very good builder, very high-quality. If this didn't happen and another builder comes along there and builds four duplexes, I just don't think it's going to have a good appearance, nearest good appearance as what you could have on this. Now, he's willing to wainscot brick all the way around the buildings. He's brought that up. He's brought up, I mean, there were some discussions in the neighborhood at a block party over there. We were asked to come over. And Roger was originally doing a 512 pitch roof. Now, I don't know if you know what that is, but for every 12 feet, you go up 5 feet, and Roger agreed to go 612 on that. Probably 70% of the homes in this area have a 612 pitch. There's not too many 812s or 1012s, very, very rare. 612 is a pretty good pitch, and I think that drawing that Sean earlier probably was a 512 possibly, between 512 and 612. I think the water's there for the fire flow. I think that could be proven. We spent a lot of time on this. Drainage is not an issue. I know that hadn't been brought up, but the Oxbow there is geared for a 50-year storm, not a 25 like is required by the city. So it'll take a lot more runoff. Roger is also willing to age-restrict this at 55 and over, which according to what we've heard from the planning department, would cut down on the density. And he would be more than happy to make that as a requirement, 55 and older, to cause any density questions to, you know, go down. He wants to work with the neighborhood. He doesn't, you know, but he can go about so far before he says, no, he's not going to do it, and that's it. And just, you know, and then you take the same chance of something lesser coming in, but meeting what standards that it would probably meet. They could go lower-income housing or something like that. He's not wanting to do that. He wants to put retirement-type people or older people in there, and he's very responsible in how he keeps stuff up. He's not a shoddy operator. He's built a lot of the $300,000 homes over in the River Trail area. He's also built the homes on Saddle Brook, the duplexes. When we developed this, it was never our intent necessarily to put in like what's out there on, where'd they bring it up, out there by Bonnie Ridge? Somebody said it.
Arrowhead Town Homes?
Yeah. That wasn't really discussed because of the lot design being 313 feet deep, infrastructure costs are expensive. It's a tail end of what's happening between the squeezing from the north on the easement, the park area, what's left over. You've got a deep lot left over right next to that Oxbow. And so it's not an easy fix. A residential home, they wouldn't want it. Nobody wants a 313-foot-deep lot, maybe out in the country, but not in town. There's one like that over on Front Street, or not Front, McAdams, right across from Central High, that's set and set and set, about 250-foot-deep. Anyway, and it's a mess in the backyard. It became a repo. I think that pretty well covers it. Is there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Howson?
Tim, is he planning on, he's planning on this as an investment property? He's not planning on, you're saying he's going to go 55 and older, retirement?
Yes, he's looking at it for rent, and it's correct. Is that what you meant?
On just building it and reselling it?
No, he wants to keep it. He plans on keeping this stuff for his retirement portfolio, and he's paying it off for the next 10 to 15 years.
How's he planning on controlling that, staying at 55 and older?
I think, I don't know, he's the lawyer, but I think you could, Roger has no objection as being a requirement condition of approval. I mean, that's fine with him.
Do you have the ability to do that?
You do have the ability to do that. It's just a matter, through a planned development district, it would simply, we have two different housing categories. We have multifamily apartments, and then we have multifamily apartments for the elderly, which are age-restricted, and we have a number of those around on Kerwin. The Willow Grove Apartments that are on Kerwin are age-restricted. Those are, there's a done-through covenants and a number of other things, but the parking requirements and some of the other requirements for elderly housing are different, but that is a separate land-use category. And so if the planned development district was approved and limited to housing for the elderly, the Planning Commission did that about three years ago with a housing project on Lambertson Lane that was a conversion of a nursing home, and that was limited to multifamily housing for the elderly. And so that, it does become an enforcement item, but if that's what it is designated from a land-use standpoint, then that is what it is. And any deviation from that would be a violation of zoning.
Now, he's also willing to work with the city on the buffering to the north, southwest. Depends kind of what the park does over there on trees. If they work together, they could probably stagger one here on my park side, one over here, and whatever. And he has no issue with that. He's looking at a Decordi fence down the west side, wrought iron with a real fancy entry sign. South side, he's looking at landscaping buffering, and I'm sure this would, I think the city still has somebody that handles that stuff, I believe, that he would, that his architect or drawer would have to work with, and that's no issue. He's looking at brick pillars on the carport, and I would tell you to the north would be where the carport would be, but you've got 100-foot of park area, 100-foot of park area between the, to the north of that, north of the parking area. So there's pretty good buffering in that direction. You've got the street to the west and to the east, you've got the park. And I don't know, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much. We'd like to hear from the public on this matter, or those present, the part of the neighborhood, general public, like to address this issue?
I'd like to say.
If you'd kindly come up to the podium, please, and for the record, we'd like to have your name and a physical address for you.
Kyle Riedel, R-I-E-D-E-L. I'm at 98 Wildcat Circle. That's lots 45 and 46. I guess, first of all, I've talked with Tim a number of times here since this letter came out, and I've talked with Roger. I brought them to the block party. We had some discussions about what they could and could not do to make this fit in the neighborhood. I've been very active trying to make sure that's the case. I'd like to point out that Tim is no longer the developer. The owner of this land is Adam Minehart. I've been in conversation with Adam. Adam told me that if we can block this proposal, he's willing to take inputs from the neighborhood, filter future developers and builders so that they would meet those inputs as a requirement of the neighborhood. You know, we've thrown around the idea of trying to come up with some money in the neighborhood and buy the thing. I think that's a long shot. We have, I think, better options than three, fourplexes in a parking lot in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes. And I've done some drawings, and I think you can fit four good-sized duplexes identical in size to the ones on Saddle Brook in that, yes, you probably do have to use the L shape. Maybe that makes it somewhat cost-prohibitive to get utilities and traffic back there. I guess another thing I would like to point out, I don't know about the pipelines and the waterways back there regarding what's required for a multifamily, but the traffic on Wayne Street right now is already pretty much maxed out. You know, you guys, there's parking on both sides of Wayne Street. Wayne Street is not wide enough to handle two lanes of traffic with parking on both sides. And whether this is age-restricted or not, there's 24 parking spots. That's 24 cars. That's 12 families. I mean, we're still talking about 12 families, whether there's kids there or not, so. I think that's probably most of the points I would like to make. Again, I'd like to stress the fact that, you know, Adam Minehart is willing to work with us as a neighborhood to get something in there that fits in the neighborhood and something that the folks that live there are comfortable with. And if that's not in the best interests of this development, I surely don't know what is. Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Riedel? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission?
I'm Don Peterson. Live at 91 Wildcat Circle. Our house faces south. Across from it, Catty Corner one way and Catty Corner the other way are two houses. More or less straight across is a vacant lot that the owner next door, Kyle, has indicated he plans to keep that as possibly a garden plot and whatever. Okay, so anyway, my point is that looking out our front window, we'll have a real fine view of the back of the new development, which will, you know, include all these spaces for cars. The place, the units that I've seen that are mainly apartment complexes that have carports, why, many of them don't really look very presentable, and so that's a concern. The aspect of putting that many more people in an area is also a concern. Our desire in buying there was to have a nice, quiet, one-family neighborhood, and now the duplexes are already, would create an increase in density. You put fourplexes in, why, it's going to be even greater. And so, in my opinion, why, the proposal should be rejected. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Reverend Jeffrey Geske. I have signed a contract, and I'm building the house at 2116 Red Hawk, which would be right across the street. And so I certainly speak in opposition of this. I moved to town, my wife and I, we moved here in November. We went to a multi-rental facility, and I well-understand the joys not of living in a multi-resident rental facility. And so parked over, driving on Broadway, going to Kmart and seeing the police fly through town, and when I get home, hey, they're there! And hear again of yet another party in my complex. And so certainly, I did not want to live there a long time and have this opportunity to build this house. And so I certainly speak against any type of multi-rental facility located across the street from me, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's what we're here for.
Hello, Mark McCartney, and I live at 2135 Red Hawk. And I guess when we, my wife and I, built our house there two years ago, we purchased a lot, and that was from legacy builders. And we, I guess we were never even told that there was any multifamily zoning anywhere in that area. And from what we, when we talked at our block party, I mean, anybody in that neighborhood, whether it's Golden Eagles Number Four or Number Five, nobody was ever notified that there was any multifamily zoning anywhere in there. And as you look, there's a sign there as you come down Wayne intersects Red Hawk. It's labeled as a city park, the strip that goes along there, but there's no labeling on there as far as multifamily or any kind of zoning for that area. It's just a vacant area on the map. So it kind of leads you to believe that maybe possibly that's part of the city park, so. I mean, when my wife and I built that house, this was going to be our forever home. We're going to live there. I'm going to raise my kids there. I'm going to have my grandkids come back there. And now, all of a sudden, somebody comes in there and says, no, we're going to build multifamily housing in here. And from what I hear, everybody in the neighborhood is pretty much opposed to that, and myself as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My name is John Luber. I recently moved to the area from the Buffalo, New York area. I work for Blue Pavement Solutions, and I live at 2206 Devon Place. My family and I, one of the first things of consideration when moving to this was, literally a week before, we decided to come and at least take a look at Salina and see if we wanted to move here, was, West Seneca where we lived was voted the number-one place to raise your family in New York. Did a little research, found out that Salina had the same distinction. Was very excited about that fact. The very first concern we had was schooling and followed by housing. So we spent literally four whole days looking at places to potentially live. New places being developed and built as well as existing locations. We constantly kept going back to that one place, a house on Devon Place. In fact, because one of the things is we have a couple of pups, and we like to have them have a little place to run around. The house that we have is right next door to a neighbor's, and each of our properties has close to about a half an acre. So one point that I'd like to bring out is that average of three places per acre in the area that I live, including the one large house that has the double lot, I'm guessing it's a lot closer to two per acre as opposed to nine. But we eventually did settle on that location, and we liked it for a bunch of reasons. There was going to be a park in the area going to be developed, and it was all residential housing. We looked at some places off a shilling, and we saw how close it was to other business areas. Having been and lived through that in the Buffalo area, decided we did not want to do that again, so we made it a point to stray away from that. We did notice that there were the houses next to the dike, is it Sandy, Sandy Lane or whatever the area is, and kind of concerned, but we noticed that they were, looked well, up-kept, and gave the okay because of the distance from where we are to where they were located. I realize this is just statements, but there's a lot of questions that come up when I'm looking at this information. What are the city's minimum requirements for a location as they build? If it is something near $150,000 per unit, that is nowhere near what the average is for the rest of the homes in that area. Some of them, from what I understand, are close to, close to a third of a million dollars, $330,000 above. I know a bunch of the neighbors, and I know this for a fact because we recently had our tax book came out and questioned our increase in our taxes, and most of them were assessed between 260 and 280. So if the buildings that are going to be developed there are lower compared to the rest of them, you're talking about reducing the value of the other homes. And in doing that, you're going to expect that most of the people in the area are going to request a reduction in their tax bills accordingly. Whether it be granted is another issue, but I'm sure that is a consideration, everybody. I do agree that these kind of facilities should be on the edge of a development like Katie Court is for the over, for the retirement communities. That makes more sense. If you're familiar with Salina, you know that there is a lot of construction going on up and down Magnolia, and I can't tell you how many times at night, no matter what the speed limit is, you still have people speeding up and down because of the detour that has to go by there. So having kids playing on a court is an advantage. It becomes a disadvantage, though, with the main drag in the main strip there. You will have an increased flow, of course, of traffic. I'd like you to remember that when you're voting. I just want to say thank you again for your time, and please don't vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Luber. Are there others to address this issue? Dean, I'm a little naive. Tell me, in my mind, when you're buying a lot, looking for a home, the real estate agents here can tell me. You're pretty much on your own to find out your information about what the neighborhood is like, or your realtor should help you understand that. Is that right?
Well, the city has developed
Well, the city has developed, which I was part of developing that, part of that for that reason, we have a brochure called Buying or Building a New Home: Tips to Avoid Surprises. And in there, we, we try to itemize things that you should ask questions about, and some of that relates to floodplain. We have made great strides and improvements, and worked with Mr. Kennedy and his staff that we now have school enrollment boundaries that are on the city's GIS website. So if you're interested in a piece of property and you want to know what school enrollment area it's in, you can find that on the city's website. You can find zoning, you can find floodplain. A lot of people who move to Salina, the concept of special assessments is foreign to them because not, not every jurisdiction does that type of special assessment financing. So those are some of the things that we itemize in our brochure. But, you know, that, that is something that we pointed out, that what we try to do when a subdivision is first laid out, like this was in 2008, is to get that laid out and get the zoning established. If you're, if you're a developer and you're going to have any multifamily or other than single-family areas, the time to make the case to get that established is when there's no occupants or residents of the lots, when the developer controls the entire subdivision. And of course, that was the case when this was established. So the, the short answer is, I think that's a case-by-case basis for the Realtor, but it's, it's going to be up to the interested buyer to ask the right questions. And then, I certainly believe that the city of Salina has done everything in its power to make as much information available to the public. We, we get calls on that. We furnish maps. It's rare and not common, but we do get people that ask before they buy a lot, they want to know what the zoning is around them, or what's, what's proposed for future development. And so that is part of the reason that we're here today, is because we have a process that if you want to deviate from what was established originally in 2008, then the neighbors in the neighborhood has a right to be notified and a chance to give comment and input on that, and that's what we're doing today. What Mr. Simpson has proposed is different than what the planning commission originally allowed for. And I do want to clarify that even if somebody came forward with a plan to construct four duplexes on this lot, they would still be in front of you, and there would still be a planning commission hearing to review that. And I also wanted to clarify two other things. One, the city does not regulate owner occupied versus rental. That is, that is not a zoning matter. That's a, a real estate market matter. The other thing is that you can regulate the footprint. In other words, you can have minimum or maximum dwelling sizes in a planned development district, and you can regulate the appearance. If you want to require a pitched roof, you can. If you want to require brick wainscoting or brick exterior, you can. If you want to incorporate architectural elements as part of the planned development district, one of the things that we're lacking here today is, we're showing you pictures from what was presented in 2008. We're not showing you pictures of what is proposed now because we don't have any elevation drawings. But it is, it is within your purview that if a developer comes in and says, I'm going to build units that look like this, the planned development district can be used to ensure that those units do look like that, and that that's what you end up with. But we're not there yet today because we haven't had any elevations presented to you of what these proposed fourplexes would look like.
Dean, we talked about an eight-inch, eight-inch water line. Is that enough to take care of the fire flow? Is, is there any fact to that? Is there an eight-inch water line, or do we need to, do we need to check into that before making a decision?
These are general rules of thumb, but the, the minimum fire flow for a single or two-family dwelling is in the neighborhood of 1,000 gallons a minute. And one of the stipulations for occupancy of Golden Eagle number four was to demonstrate before any houses were built that you could at least achieve 1,000 gallons a minute, and it barely did. And so if you have 1,000 gallons a minute, that gives staff pause of whether you can have sufficient fire flow to truly build multifamily. And that, that, that's meaning more than two units in a building. And we spent a good deal of time doing modeling and debating fire flows and all of that, and I, I believe that that's something that we would want to go back and get the fire marshal and others involved with before we could sit here and say, we are confident that we can achieve the necessary fire flows to do four units in a building.
I just have a, I guess a point of clarification. Got to be close.
Okay, can you hear me now? If I do any more, I'm going to have supper. A point of clarification about the, what was mentioned by Mr. Reedle, I think, that the owner of the property is Adam Reinhardt. Is, I'm not clear, I'm just not clear on all that. And it was also stated, I believe, that Mr. Reinhardt was willing to work with the current property owners to develop something that might be more compatible with the neighborhood. I, I guess I'd like to know a little more about that. Is that true, or am I, am I, did I just misunderstand?
Well, one of my, one of my hobbies is, is mastering the history of Golden Eagle Estates, since I've, I've worked on every phase of it, but the original Golden Eagle Estates was a partnership between Dan Minehart and Tim Halison. And that worked all the way through from the first phase all the way to the current Golden Eagle Estates number five. Mr. Minehart passed away. Adam is his son. And when that occurred, Tim got control of some of the lots from a sale and ownership standpoint, and Adam, who lives in Utah, has control of others of those lots. It's my understanding that Adam has control of this lot. And he, he is the current owner within the Golden Eagle Estates Limited Corporation.
And my understanding was correct, that he's willing to work with the property owners there now and develop something that is more compatible with their needs? I mean, if that's the case, why aren't we not allowing that to happen?
Mr. Reedle, would you have anything?
That's certainly an option that, that you have. I, it, Mr. Minehart was furnished a packet and all, but he visits Salina very rarely, and we communicate by email and other means, but I've had two face-to-face conversations with him when he's been in Salina, but it's infrequent, and being in Utah makes it a little harder for him to, to manage it directly. But Mr. Halison can correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the lots are divided between those that are Mr. Halison's and those that are Adam Minehart's.
Maybe Mr. Reedle could clarify that. You were the one that mentioned that concept, weren't you? And you've apparently talked to this gentleman.
Yeah. Kyle Reedle, again. Yeah, I've talked with Adam several times since this letter came out, emailed him several times. I wrote a letter that states, you know, the fact that Adam is willing to work with us. I mean, he's willing to rezone to single-family if we can come up with a way to put enough single-family homes in there that we can pay for the special assessments that would be required to build road. He's, you know, I've floated some, some ideas to him. He's, he's looked into how much it would cost to build road and got back to me. You know, there's things we can do, and like I said, Adam's more than willing to work with us. Tim mentioned the fact that something, something worse could come down the pipe if, you know, if we don't accept this plan. I talked to Adam about that fact. He said, you know, he can decide who he sells this to. He told me that Tim convinced him that the neighborhood would not be concerned about this plan. And that's why, you know, he had his doubts about this plan from the beginning. This is what Adam told me. I, I don't know, you know, about the past and what's went on in the past, but I know that moving forward, Adam is willing to work with us. He would like us to put together a list of requirements, and I'm willing to, you know, rally the neighborhood to get that list together. I'm willing to talk to developers to see if they would be willing to build something that we could come up with. I don't have any money, and I don't have any building skills, otherwise I'd just do it myself. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments there, but I also just caution against taking, putting any real credence into accepting, you know, a third-party recommendation of what somebody else is saying. I mean, if that person wants to come in here and say something, I think I'd probably appreciate that more. I just don't know that I really can accept that because it's, it's not that person saying anything. But, you know, what it comes down to is, and I appreciate all what I consider to be very ancillary discussion around this, but I'm more appreciative also of the work that was done three years ago on this, and the, and the end result is that it was a density issue. It's still a density issue. You know, and, and there's not going to be any less of a density concern now than it was in 2008, nor would I think for a second that it's going to be less of a density issue in 2015 than it is right now. And that's what it comes down to, at least in, in my mind. And I'd like to see something that addresses that, and I'd like to see some elevations, which, you know, we have, we have neither of those, and, and nothing's been done after it was stated that that's what we wanted to see in 2008 either.
I agree with you, Mr. Brooks, but we'll continue with the public portion here, and Kyle, there's more to say.
To address your comment, Mr. Brooks, yeah, I have had phone conversations and emails back and forth with Adam. I can either try to dig up an email that states the things that we had talked about, or I can have Adam send an email to one of you guys if that's, if that would be more appropriate. The other thing is, you know, I, I understand why the initial zoning of this lot is the way it is. The power lines, the, the limited right-of-way, and stuff like that, like Tim mentioned, the man-made and the god-made obstacles. But Dean had also mentioned the fact that now we're, we're looking at putting this into the middle of a single-family development. This is no longer on the edge of, of a development. Everything's developed around it already. When you drive by there, there's really no reason for folks to believe that this type of density belongs there. And I think that is, that is misleading, and it's misled most of us, and that's, that's the crux of the concern. You know, I, I think furthermore, if you put this in here, it, it in and of itself is an obstacle that would actually probably stunt development for the rest of Wildcat Circle. I mean, I wouldn't have built a house if that was built there, or bought a house there if that was built there, that's, that's for sure. And I don't know how this affects property values. I know there's some nice single-family homes built on, might be Eagle Crest, right next to where this Katy Court area was built by Roger. And I don't know if we, we have access or could look up the tax records of the, those homes in that proximity to see how the, the property values were affected, so that maybe we could get an idea of how that, it would affect those of us who are near this. I don't know if that would be something that would weigh on your decision either.
Are there others from the public that want to comment? Mr. Halison, I think you deserve an opportunity to respond.
First of all, I'd like to clarify one thing. I never told Adam Minehart that there wouldn't be any issue with the neighbors, because I absolutely don't know what they think. I know from previous meetings, many, 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 many meetings over the last 25 years, every time, there's always an issue. I mean, it's always the same type of meeting. Now, I, I would compliment the people back there. They've been very courteous, and, and I, I appreciate that because some of these meetings aren't like that. But...
Just in the county.
Yeah. They haven't got their guns out yet. Anyway, the purchase price on this lot was right at $100,000. And unless Adam is willing to sell that for what the lots are bringing down that area down to 35,000 or 40,000, it's only big enough for one lot, unless you put a lot cheaper housing in there and put two 70-foot lots, and I don't think people are going to like that. So I do, I, and, and plus, I'll still bring up the depth of that lot. I don't know who on earth is going to buy a 313-foot-deep lot for their home. It's not going to happen, not in town. If that was an option, we would, or some, some configuration, we would have done it because we'd much rather go that direction. But the obstacles on this thing have made this difficult to do anything with this lot because of the depth, the oxbow, the park to the north. See, we had a lot more frontage. We had enough frontage to create two lots earlier, but the city needed 100-foot frontage along Red Hawk. And I think we'd originally dedicated 50 feet to get in and out, and when that occurred, that caused us to go to one lot, one multiple-family lot because of the depth. As far as the fire flows were tested substantially back when we got into this, because there was a debate, and we wanted the bigger fire line, and I'm pretty sure the eight-inch went in clear up to Wayne. And like I said, it's pretty basic math. Eight inches is 80% bigger on flow of water than a six-inch. I'm involved in water up north, and so I get involved in calculations, stuff like that a lot. Roger, I think if the planning board is concerned about what's being built, Roger had mentioned to me that he was willing to table this for three weeks to come back with elevations in the frontal, and of course, he did have a floor plan in here. If you thumbed through that, you can see one, but, and he's also willing to age restricted 55, which would cut down the density, and technically, it could cut down the parking, if I understood it correctly, that if you go 55 and older, you don't have the required parking that you do under 55. But he, he still thinks the parking should be what it is, you know, in case people show The cost efficiency really changes on this if you start doing some of the things that have been brought up. It's impossible to put it down to a single-family lot unless somebody wants to pay that kind of money. You can buy lots for, because of the economy, you're buying lots with specials paid off in the 30, 32,000 range on nice lots. Now, there's none left out there, but, and that's a bargain considering the specials cost 19,000 to put in, because we paid for it. But I, I don't see any possibility of this being a single-family. Adam is young, and he doesn't understand what it takes to do that. But if he wants to sell it, you know, for some other use, that's fine. We'll move on. But I don't think many people are going to come up with the $100,000 to buy that lot, and I'm sure Adam, you know, the way Dan was, he's very tight with his money and very frugal, and he'll want the 100,000. I think that pretty well covers it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Again, I don't have, you know, some, a statement from Adam in front of me. That lot, I believe, is under contract. It was per what Adam told me, he's under contract with Roger at 95,000 right now. And I think that, yeah, Tim, I know, Adam and I have been back and forth about how this could be converted to single-family. That's kind of a long shot. That would be my, my mountain to climb, I guess, if you will, but you would have to put, oh, at least four, at least four lots in there. It would still require a right-of-access. Think a cult, a one-sided cul-de-sac is what you would really be, be thinking of. You'd have a road somewhere. And it gets, it gets tricky because of the specials that would have to be paid off with a small amount of lots. It's tricky, but not impossible. Adam's done some of the math for me. Anyway, I just, I... I wanted to point out that it's not 100K right now. It's 95. I don't know if Adam has any wiggle room on that or not.
Reverend Jeff Geske again. I think that would be a great place for a park, the whole thing. I mean, next to a park in some way, if the city and Dean could, if there's some way, if there's a grant or something that could be achieved to add that to a park, and as people have been paying specials for many years, and there's a park planned there, it would sure be nice to see a park there. So, just a thought.
Put a street back there. I don't know what it's up to, but about $155 to $170 a linear foot. It's impossible. $100,000 for the lot, another $35,000, $40,000 for the street coming back, and it's clear out of sight. I mean, if you rent a street down that side, put a knuckle there, I don't think homeowners are going to want to pay that kind of money for two residential lots if you split it into two, running east to west. So, just wanted to clarify that.
You got a question?
Okay.
If there's no more further public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. I guess I see this like Commissioner Brooks. It's a density issue, and I think the prior commissions gave careful consideration to that fact in several meetings, so I don't see where I can support the request for additional density. They do have the duplex plan.
We did go over this quite extensively, and I've been on this commission for a long time. I was on the commission that did this in 2008, and it's brought before us many times the factor of money and how we're supposed to justify our decision based upon the value of something or not the value of something, and that's not appropriate. I am, I'm on top of this thing. I don't know what else to do. But nonetheless, I'm like Ken. I don't like the flavor of this thing. Nonetheless, I think what we have to look at is the merits of the application by itself, and what we looked at in 2008 was a maximum of duplexes in there. That's the only thing we felt comfortable with. We did not feel comfortable that fourplexes would ever fit the character of that neighborhood, period. And I think the minutes, and Mr. Reedley did a great job of putting all that together, but the minutes will show that that was our feelings at that time. I don't think it's any different for me personally right now. I'm still, townhomes are a stretch. The duplexes are a stretch even for me, but we understand that lot has some physical abnormalities, and you have some overhead utilities and stuff. I think the duplex is a max for me, and I would, I'd have to deny the application on that value alone.
Other remarks, gentlemen?
Yes, I think it's interesting that we have the transcript of the April 15, 2008 meeting, and it's a word-for-word transcript. And it's interesting to see how difficult it is to predict the future, and especially when it comes to money. As you recall, April 2008 was before we had an economic crash, but at that time, Mr. Howson projected that the houses north of this tract might run only $160,000 to $180,000, maybe $200,000. And that's exactly what he said. As it's turned out, this project, this whole development has been much more successful. In the face of the recession, people have been willing to invest a lot more than that, and the project now, more than ever, looks like it would be very unwise to put new housing in there, a small amount of a new housing, that did not stand up to the quality of what's already been built. When you drive through there, every house has a two-car or three-car, and some have additional garages. They're all pretty consistent in design. It's a very attractive area. I would think that, at the very least, we need some kind of housing on this tract that has a garage, that has the same general character. And I think you'd be shooting everybody in the foot to build something that looked like those 2008 fourplex designs that we've seen today. So, we're not ready for a motion, but I would definitely support a motion to deny the present application. I think that the neighborhood and interested developers then need to work with Mr. Minehart, even though he is in Utah, to come up with a proposal that really makes sense to support a more-than-successful subdivision that's going on now.
I appreciate those comments and agree. Sorry, I jumped into it a little bit earlier. I was under the impression that public comments had closed, judged by the staff interaction. But, you know, I don't know, give us direction on this, Dean. I don't know that we need to actually vote to deny. We could just simply say that we're tabling this until they can come back with something that we feel is a little bit more representative of, you know, what's been expressed here.
If there's not support for this amendment, that would go to three, fourplexes, and the appropriate motion would be to deny this proposed PDD amendment, and then it would be left to Mr. Minehart and the neighbors and all to meet and come up with a alternate proposal, and they can submit that whenever their interest meets and they want to come forward with something. But there's, if Mr. Simpson is not obviously interested in the current zoning arrangement, so the appropriate message would be to say that you recommend, which would be option or alternate five, which would be that you believe that the site layout is incompatible with the surrounding single-family area. The appropriate message would be to deny it, and that would require some alternate submittal at a different date. No matter what happens on this lot, it's going to come before you, before anything gets built.
The chairman agrees with that opinion. Mr. Maxell, would you like to give us a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we deny application PDD 08-1A for reasons of the site layout and design would be, would not support the change in the application wording as it stands.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Comments from the commission?
I'm not sure I can deny or accept it based on the information. We don't have elevations. We don't have facts on water flow. We've got a discrepancy on whether we have an eight-inch line or a six-inch line. I don't think Dean's just, has told us either one.
There's an eight-inch line there.
But you're not saying it's a thousand-foot will work or will not work, or you've tested it, and...
You can build, you can build lines as big as you want, but if you're trying to run water a half-mile with friction loss and other things, you lose flow through distance. And it's not the line size, it's the distance.
You're stating that the tests in 2008 were barely able to meet the requirements.
Barely able to get 1,000.
Other comments? I'll call a question then, and all those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The denial motion carries. We'll move on to the next agenda item, number three, application Z12-5 filed by the City Planning Commission, a review of the current prohibition on outdoor storage and display of goods in the C4 Central Business District.
Mr. Chairman...
Thank you all for your participation, your presence here today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to stand down from the next two issues. First, in the first one, because I'm the lucky one through a quirk of history to have the right on my property for outdoor display, and the second one, in that there is a financial conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, we're sorry, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that we weren't able to have Phil Kleeman with us from the Lee District today, but this is, as we are commonly have, applications that relate to the nature and character of what goes on in the downtown area in the Lee District, because it is a unique area within the city, and we are, as staff members and sometimes planning commissioners, pushed and pulled between protecting the historic character and a unique character of the downtown area versus rules and regulations that might be seen as an impediment to having a vibrant downtown. That came up in the context of tattoo parlors that we cited here. It also came up in the context of the issue of whether you could have an automobile sales lot in the C4 district, and we've provided you background on how those different issues have been wrestled with and how conditional uses have been historically dealt with. But one of the things that occurred with the issue of used car sales is there was a proposal to have a used car display lot just south of the First Bank, Kansas, on Santa Fe Avenue, and there was some wrestling back and forth. It seems strange that you could have that as a use, but also have a use limitation that basically all the display and the sales activity had to be within an enclosed building. But if you put the two together, that's how it fits. So, automobile sales is permissible in the downtown area. It's just you can't have an outdoor sales lot, except for when that change occurred. There was one outdoor sales lot in existence at Fourth and Iron that was grandfathered in. We've had no proposals since that time. But this current issue, and just like with the tattoo parlors, we've linked the two together, and what occurred in the question of tattoo parlors is, is you basically had a two-part question. Are you willing to entertain tattoo parlors in the downtown area as a conditional use, yes or no? If the answer is yes, we happen to have a conditional use permit request that's following right along with that. And what we have here is a retail business, wholesale patio that is proposing to locate at 113 South Santa Fe, and it's a somewhat unique property for the downtown area. It had an upstairs loft apartment that was installed, and as part of that loft apartment, there was a rear patio and then a fenced-in courtyard area. And so, what the owner of the business would like to do is utilize that outdoor courtyard area for the display of barbecue grills and outdoor cooking appliances, and perhaps even to have cooking demonstrations there. So, we informed the business owner and the, Phil Kleeman at the Lee District, that based on our application of the current C4 regulations, that that area would not be allowed for, because all of the display has to be within a completely enclosed building. So, you can see in your packets, next to the application was a request from the Lee District Board of Advisors that you look at this and that you consider adding the retail display as a conditional use in the C4 district. So, that's the issue that we're presenting for you today in part one, which is the policy question of whether outdoor merchandise display should be allowed on some basis in the downtown business district. And from our standpoint, it's somewhat similar to what we have with the outdoor dining or courtyard areas for dining or beverage service, and that is essentially a conditional use permit application is applied for, neighboring property owners are notified, you conduct a hearing and decide whether that should be permitted. And so, the real question is whether that should be allowed for, and if so, on what basis. And we basically have three options as it relates to the current ordinance, and one of those was that you could recommend that it be added as a conditional use in the C4 district. Under this alternative, it would be, as I noted, which an application would be filed, surrounding property owners would be notified, public hearing would be held. You would basically be the filter for determining what locations were appropriate for outdoor display. Another option would be to limit it to the fringe areas of the downtown, and another option would be to simply maintain the status quo and do not change the ordinance, which would be to maintain that prohibition. Part of the reason it hasn't really come up much before is that our downtown is unique, that many of our buildings in the downtown area occupy 100% of the lot that they sit on. There is no space for any outdoor display, except on a public sidewalk or a public parking lot, which is not permissible. So, this really boils down to, you know, what type of business mix the downtown business district wants to have, and the type of visual character they want to have. The Lee District Board of Advisors is on record as wanting to see this happen, and to see it happen on a conditional use basis. And so, John, if you could go to the, you have the language on the screen, please. So, what we have come up with is, this is the current language, which is pretty clear. All business service storage display shall be within a completely enclosed building. That would rule out any outdoor courtyard or display area. We already have an exception for the restaurants and drinking establishments to have service on an outdoor patio, but it's not cleanly packaged into this, so our proposal would be that you'd maintain that language and then have two exceptions. And one of those would be the exception for the outdoor patio, which we already do, and the most recent case of that was the rendezvous bar on North Santa Fe, where they added an outdoor patio, which you reviewed. And then, this is what we're proposing to address this particular issue, and that would create an exception for retail stores, which could have an outdoor merchandise sales and display area. And we left a blank there, because we would want to get input from you and not put a number in there that wouldn't work. In many of our other areas, you can have an outdoor garden area, but it's limited to a certain percentage of the floor area of the store. If you have an outdoor dining area, it can't be bigger than your indoor dining area. We're not exactly sure what that might be, but it seemed like 50% might be reasonable, but we thought we would get input from you. So, in other words, if you had a store downtown and they had an indoor store area, their accessory outdoor display area could be up to 50% of the area of the store, but I don't think we'd want a situation where you had outdoor display that was twice as large as the store itself. And so, the idea is that it's accessory to the retail store, not the other way around. And so, the two potential amendments would be to create an exception to the prohibition on outdoor merchandise display, and then you, the other amendment would be to add to the list of conditional uses in the downtown area by adding outdoor merchandise and display areas. And if you agreed that 50% was reasonable, that would be plugged in there. But that is item three, which is whether the rules in the C4 district should be amended to allow for that. And then, if you view that favorably, we would discuss item four, which is a specific request in a specific location. But as it stands, I will stand for any questions for the general text amendment that would open the door for some outdoor display.
Did Downtown Inc. comment on this percentage thing? This is a little bit like the signage issue, and we were talking about public facilities... This is a little bit like the signage issue when we were talking about public facilities and how much copy you could have up. Why does that make a difference?
To my knowledge, Phil didn't have any input on that, did she, John?
No, she didn't, as far as percentage goes.
This was on the agenda for the Board of Advisors. And their request was it be allowed as a conditional use in C4, but they basically left it to you to decide the form that the amendment might take.
Well, it looks like from this drawing here that the, we've got 40 feet of display area and 60 feet of building, that'd be like 33% of the, or 60% of the, 66% of the floor plan, is that right?
Forty percent of the total, so 66% of the.
I asked John to do some calculations on that. One, you can't tell readily from the drawing, but there's an area here where there's an elevated patio and stairs, so it's not clean. But roughly, and this is probably as big an area as you could possibly have in the downtown area, it would be about 40% of the.
So 50% of getting what they need.
Yeah, so it would be like 66% of the floor area of the store. So the other option is simply to not have a percentage and just say that it can't be. So if you could go back to the language, please, John. So one thing, we didn't want it, it's easy to do these things in the abstract and say what sounds reasonable. And 50% sounds reasonable, but then soon as you turn around and apply it to this situation, it doesn't fit. So one way to do it is simply get rid of the percentage and say that they could have a display area not greater in size than the floor area of the store, which is essentially what you have on the outdoor dining. You can't have an outdoor dining area that's bigger than the floor area of your indoor dining area.
There's probably not many places downtown that even fit that model anymore.
No, there are very few because, as I said, the majority, at least on Santa Fe, the building occupies 100% of the lot. This is an unusual lot, which is part of the reason we're here.
But this, you said something about automotive outdoor storage north of there near the bank area.
No, I'm saying that is a context in which it came up.
Can it happen there? Is there enough lot there? If we approved this, that could happen.
No, it cannot happen.
Automotive is completely out.
It is completely out. What I was explaining is back when that was considered, the planning commission wanted to allow automobile sales with outdoor sales lots on a conditional use basis. And the city commission did not want to allow it at all. So you can go to the list, and the list says you can have automobile sales in C4, but if you want to sell automobiles in C4, all your merchandise has to be inside a building.
So the reason for my question, if we approve this and it's 50%, and this sold to somebody that sold automobiles, they would not be able to put automobiles out there.
No, because a retail store is not the same as an automobile sales lot. A retail store is merchandise inside a store. And an automobile sales lot is not a retail store.
I'm lost. So help me out. I mean, what, if, we're talking about maybe barbecue things going out here, cookers or whatever, but could somebody lease that, if we approved this, could someone then lease that facility that has that ability to store and put automotive differentials out there, for example? Sell them inside, use differentials outside, stacked up on these racks, as we've seen all over the country, and look terrible. Could that happen?
If somebody leased this and had an automobile parts business in it, which would be a retail store, they could have merchandise outside. That is correct.
And I've seen this in communities. I've seen where they've been allowed to have motorcycles or automobiles outside only during business hours. They have to go inside out of business hours. And that really has some attraction to me because it gets away from having a used car or a used parts lot that things are just stored out there full-time. And if they're good enough to move in and out, you know, they have some value to them. I think when you think of used furniture can be another situation. You can have people rent a place like this, flea market.
So, and basically, they could put all kind of used furniture out on the outside if we allowed this, and I'm kind of against that, frankly.
You know, it's actually my concern with this is that you have display and storage lumped into the same condition we use. And display, I think, is fine. The storage, then, that part of it bothers me a little bit. And I think that that could be remedied by looking at something that could be done during the daytime hours because then it takes the storage out of it.
Or if you will. If you will, and if you read the amendment, we have purposely not included the word "storage" because of that concern. But I would explain that in the downtown area today, we have a provision that allows for merchants to put, they could put a potted plant out, they could put a sandwich board sign out, they could put tables and chairs out on the sidewalk, but at the close of business day, they have to bring them back into the store.
Would that apply to this? The barbecues could put that out during the day?
It would not apply to this unless you say so. And unless, and we would want to hear from Mr. Maltby of whether that would defeat the entire purpose of the amendment.
Well, I don't think that's practical. I think Downtown Inc. is probably wants every flexibility they can have. And, you know, if I'm Downtown Inc., then I'm going to rely on the process where they've got to come forward with the conditional use request and the other inner workings of Downtown Inc. to control these things. What happens downstream after the original conditional use is permitted, that's going to be up to them. But I think they'd want open-ended.
And part of what we've tried to include here is that you could have conditions. And part of the condition that's present here is that there is a fence around the outdoor area. So item three is looking at the district-wide. Item four is looking at this specific property.
After I stood down, could I make one comment about the long-term? This is on the item of having the special use permit or conditional use permit in the law. There is a large tract of land that we're probably not thinking about at Walnut Street and Fourth Street South that is in the C4 district from Walnut Cleardown to Mulberry, which potentially could be totally rehabilitated into something else, and it needs to be done. The old, the old, old, original General Air Complex that it was, before that, it was a lumberyard. There are buildings there that haven't really been used the last 10 or 12 years. There's about 50% vacant land. One of the last uses was a flea market that did have merchandise in the front yard at times. They had bicycles and trailers and some other odds and ends, yard ornaments and things. If that block were to be redeveloped, there is potential to have it done with new buildings that may not cover the entire property and that it may be desirable, at least to the future business, to have some kind of outdoor display area. And I was thinking, one of the things potentially would be like a bicycle shop, where it might be worthwhile to have bicycles outside. And this is, you know, not relating to anything that's before the board right now, except that you're talking about the overall rules and regulations of the zoning. And there is potential for some kind of use like this. So if you put it in as a conditional use and a percentage like a third of the property or 50% of the property being available for outdoor business use, it might be worthwhile on getting those properties redeveloped.
I'm also thinking about the large vacant lot north of Sunflower Bank, west of the post office. I mean, you're going to open that up to, I mean, you know, there's other uses that the gentleman's purchased for now, but if he sells that, you've opened that up to 100% equal to, somebody could go out there and not even erect a building and have open display storage if you don't put a percentage on it. Would that be correct, or am I?
Well, the thought here is that this has to be accessory to a retail store. And maybe that we need to add that, it's implied, but maybe we need to add that word. But basically, if somebody said, "I want to come in and apply for a conditional use permit and just have an open sales display area on the vacant lot at Ash and Santa Fe", that's not something that you could apply for. In order to apply for this, you have to have a retail store.
Could I build a 10 by 10 building and then apply for it?
Then your floor area, if it couldn't be greater than the floor, would be limited to 10 by 10. But we're not proposing necessarily get rid of the limitation on size, but simply instead of saying not, that it cannot exceed the floor area of the store. So if I have a store area that's 50 by 50, I cannot have a display area that's bigger than 50 by 50. And if I had put up a 10 by 10 building, then my display area couldn't be larger than 10 by 10.
But if I buy two lots and build on a 25 by 100 foot, so I've got 2,500 square feet, that means I can have 2,500 square feet of the next lot open storage.
Correct.
And clarify for me again, I'm not seeing it in there, but I'm.
Motor vehicles are exempt, not allowed, outside, period.
They're not allowed outside.
Even if they can be stored inside, they cannot be moved outside under this.
What does it say that? I just missed it.
Okay. You can't have any business service storage, display of goods, except within a completely enclosed building. And this is proposing one exception, which already exists, which this clarifies, that the two exceptions to that rule, that every item that you have for sale has to be inside an enclosed building, the two exceptions would be restaurants and drinking establishments, which could have an outdoor patio if approved as a conditional use by the planning commission, and a retail store, which would be a florist shop, a kitchen appliance business, anybody that's in the retail store business, as long as the floor area of that outdoor display area didn't exceed the floor area of the store. If the planning commission saw the plan, where it was going to be located, and approved it.
But I'm still not clear, Dean, on the motorcycles. I'm saying, what Todd was talking about on that lot, put a nice building up and you sell motorcycles inside, but during the day, you could not take them outside. That says that, right?
Yes, that's already the rule.
All right, that's already the rule.
And the other thing, which I guess we'll try to make clear, is that where Dylan Southgate is on South Ohio is zoned for retail stores, but nobody can put a car lot there because the zoning doesn't allow it, because a car lot is not a retail store.
But in C4, you can put auto sales in C4, but they have to be inside.
But they have to be inside. And this would not change that.
And they can never be pulled outside.
And they can never be pulled outside, even temporarily.
So the motor makes a difference. Bicycles could, motorcycles couldn't.
Yes.
Lawnmowers, motorboats.
Dean, refresh my memory on the conditional use permit process. That stays with the physical location, or it stays with the business?
It stays with the physical location, although you have some discretion, which can be used if you want to tie it to a particular occupant. It's more difficult to do that way, and it's more difficult to monitor. But conceivably, what you're saying is that we've looked at the property at 113 South Santa Fe, and we've looked at all the characteristics, and we've looked at the fact that it has a fenced-in area and how big the building is in relation to the outdoor area, and we think that's appropriate for outdoor display. And if it was barbecue grills, and four years from now, somebody came in and they wanted to have a hardware store or some improvement store, and they wanted to have lawn mowers or some yard implements or things like that, and they want to display them outside, they So the alternatives to that is that you either say, under the conditional use permit, that it's tied to that occupant, or you say that the outdoor display is limited to barbecue grills and outdoor kitchen appliances only. And then that has the effect of limiting the outdoor display to those items, to say you're not opening it up for other things.
For only that specific address.
Yes. But you could say, "We are approving a conditional use permit for the outdoor display of barbecue grills and outdoor kitchen appliances or patio cooking appliances only."
No matter who's in there.
No matter who's in there. And if wholesale patio store sold to somebody else, but they were in the same business and wanted to display grills, they could. If they sold to somebody and they wanted to display lawn mowers, then they couldn't because you had specified it for outdoor barbecue grills and outdoor patio cooking appliances only.
Specificity would be important because then that way, if the same, if the occupant never changes, but the occupant wants to display something different, so it's not being tied to the occupant, because then it's being tied directly to the products. That way, two months down the line, if the occupant decides that they want to display, you know, engine parts or something like that, then they can't do that because it's specific to the.
And that is the difficulty of this that we explained to the Lee District Board of Advisors, is that, you know, one month, you're calling us up and saying, "Hey, could you clean up the guy that has the flea market and's got all his stuff outside because C4, you're not supposed to have anything outside?" So we send him a letter and say, "You can't have your flea market items outside your building. We're sorry." And it's across the board. What they're saying is that they think, in their minds, the outdoor display of barbecue grills and things of this nature is, in this particular business, is desirable. And so you've got to do two things. You've got to craft an ordinance that allows for some retail display to occur outdoors, but doesn't just open the doors wide open. And then you can use the conditional use process on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis to say, "We think the outdoor display of these types of items is okay." And specify them.
Do you have to, I mean, you can't just simply approve Z12-5, saying that it's okay to add that to the conditional uses, and then just on each one, then just be specific on what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you're going to, as they come forward, there's going to be a plan, and there's going to be photographs, and there's going to be applicants saying, "Here's my nature of my business, and these are the things that I want to display outdoors." And you can limit it just to that and say, "This doesn't include all these other items."
Dean, can you also limit then, if there's a square footage area in the back, display area? Could you limit the displaying items to the amount of the square footage that is available out there?
Yes.
Meaning, you couldn't put 400 barbecue grills back there? Meaning, a barbecue grill would have a square footage of whatever it is, and that would have to be, you couldn't exceed maybe 50%. The displayed items couldn't be over 50% of the display square footage.
Display area, yeah.
Well, what if you don't stack stuff up?
I don't, I don't think we talked, we didn't say it has to be moved in. We mentioned as a concept, but you could use outdoor for, understanding the difference between display and storage is a little ambiguous.
Yes, it is. But storage generally implies things that aren't for sale to customers. They're just things that don't fit in the building and they're being stored outdoors. A lot of contractors have outdoor storage. The stuff they have outdoors isn't for sale for display. Stutzman's is outdoor display. That's what it, that's not storage, that's display. Everything they have out there is for sale.
I like the concept. I think this is proposed by, through you, from the city. They apparently want this to be considered. I don't have a problem with, as long as it's conditional use, and each time we look at what the items are. I have no problem with brand-new barbecuers being stored outside. I have a problem with used car parts being stacked up outside. I have a problem with used car parts being stacked up outside, or, and saying they're for sale. I have no problem with motor scooters being outside. I have a little problem with used cars being outside, you know, that type of thing. So the conditional use would allow us, the commission, whoever that is, to look at that on an individual case basis.
You would be, you would be the filter. And we were, we were very hesitant, and told then that we couldn't recommend just making outdoor storage a permitted use or activity in the downtown area. It needed to be a filtered process, which is basically what we're recommending, is first, you allow it, the item three here is allowing it at all, that's something that they can apply for, and then item four is a specific request, that is what prompted this whole issue to come up with the Lee District Board.
Do we maybe want to, I've been thinking about Abner's bicycle shop that he's going to put in, in that 2,500-square-foot building that he's going to have, and 2,500 square feet of bicycle display outside. Do we want to put a caveat in there that we, that the maximum, or that call that a maximum square footage? The maximum square footage of the display area will be equal to the size of the building, and maybe less, depending on the commission's findings, or something?
Well, that, that is not something that you are, you are bound to. It's basically saying that you don't have the authority to entertain an application or approve one where the outdoor display area is bigger than the store itself, but you have the discretion to say, "We approve outdoor storage in an area not to exceed X square feet."
So if we just took out that percentage requirement there, and just said, "An area not..."
It said not to exceed, but you...
Not exceed the floor area of the store.
You can always be more restrictive. What that's intended to do is not give you or anybody else the opportunity to be more liberal, so that somebody doesn't go out and build a 10 by 10 building, like Mr. Welsh wants to, and then have 90% of the area devoted to outdoor display.
So the purposes for this number three, am I hearing that we all agree that it's a useful conditional use addition, and we would strike the percentage requirement and just leave the wording to be not to exceed the floor area of the store?
I, I mean, we were, we started down the path of percentages and what was appropriate, but if everybody understood that the outdoor storage area could never exceed the size of the store, but you could always be more restrictive, then I think that works.
And it always comes back as a conditional use, anyway.
Yes, and we're always going to tell you what that number is, and John tells me, in this particular instance, the building footprint is 1,500 square feet, and the outdoor area behind it is 1,000 square feet. And if, if you want to, even though that area is available, it's 1,000 square feet, if you want to limit outdoor display to 400 of the 1,000 square feet, you can. It's whatever you think is appropriate.
But we wouldn't even need to put a limit on this motion now, because we would be able to put the limit on there.
You would be able to put a limit on, on a case-by-case basis. All, all this is doing is, is, in the zoning world, you use the term accessory, meaning it's something that supports the primary mission. So at Central High School, Mr. Kennedy wants to put up a storage building, the storage building is accessory to the school. If somebody wants to put up a garage, they can't build a garage that's bigger than their house, because the garage is accessory to the house. So what this is saying is, the outdoor storage is accessory to a store, so you could never have a time where the outdoor storage could exceed the size of the store.
And if there were a good proposal to do otherwise, that would go to variance.
That would go to a variance, yes. But this is a public hearing, yes.
Well, we're still on number three, but if you'd like to speak to...
Mr. Maltby has a profound interest in this, so...
Yeah, I do. I just want to make sure that none of those lots are ugly later in the future. I was just saying, make it an amendment, maybe to, or clause to, any outdoor area of storage, for worry of car parts and whatnot, are enclosed in a privacy area, so it's not visible from people driving by. You can't just see, you know, it's not completely visible. Like ours is completely enclosed. You can never know it's there unless you go in the store. I would do something like that for the C4 district. I'd recommend it.
That would also be something we could do at the, for a specific application, right?
Yes, you could, for a specific application.
I remember the mind to leave it open, so you can consider all prospect. Because sometimes enclosures can look worse than none. We've seen that.
Bad fence.
Screening trees.
It's like a bad hair day.
Live screening tree.
Well, what we're looking at here is that this would, basically, if you could raise that a little bit, John, because I can't see it, but the, you would, you would just scratch, say, "Provided that the display area does not exceed the floor area of the store," and just get rid of the percentage, and then up here, instead of the "not greater than," you would say, "Which may have an outdoor merchandise sale, display area that does not exceed the floor area of the store." And then you've basically sent the message that the, the, the display area has to be supportive of, or accessory to, the store, and then you can deal with all the other issues on a case-by-case basis, whether it's screening, whether it's the nature of the items displayed, whether it's limiting the total floor area that can be used for outdoor display. Those are all on the table.
I'd make a motion, Chairman, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'd make a motion to application Z12-5 for approving retail stores, which may have an outdoor merchandise sales and display area not greater than the floor percentage area of the store, provided that the outdoor display area is located on private property and not public right-of-way. If approved as a conditional use by the planning commission, following notification of affected property owners in public hearing. If a conditional use permit is approved, appropriate requirements and conditions may be established by the planning commission, and the permit may be modified or revoked if the requirements and the conditions are not complied with.
Second.
And shall I add section 14 as well?
Yeah, we would have an amendment to add that to the list of conditional uses that you could apply for.
And the amendment below, outdoor merchandise sales, display area, accessories to a retail store, provided that the display area does not exceed the percentage of the floor area of the store.
Second motion.
Did you get all that?
So text is recommended with...
And there's a second?
We had a motion for Mr. Welsh, and a second for Mr. Kennedy, to amend section 42306 to add the retail store outdoor display area, and also to add, as a conditional use, you can apply for a outdoor display area.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number four, application CU12-4 filed by Wholesale Patio Store, requesting an approval of a conditional use permit to allow outdoor display of merchandise at a business in the C4.
Perfect timing.
So the timing is really apropos here, because you've just decided that you're willing to entertain these types of applications on a case-by-case basis. And so a lot of those specifics, we covered. The specific location is a half lot on the east side of South Santa Fe, between Iron and Walnut. John's got a lot of photos that he has displayed for you, but basically, it's a zoning lot that's 25 feet wide and 120 feet deep, and it faces Santa Fe. I did want to indicate for your information that these, in addition to the Lee District Board of Advisors, the Lee District Design Review Board also looked at this, and indicated that in addition to approving the front signage on this building, they felt that, in this instance, because the outdoor display area was completely enclosed by a fence and, and gate, and you'd still have to walk through the store to get back to the area, that they were supportive of a, of a text amendment and a conditional use permit in this instance. So we have in the, in the packet, a letter that we sent to Mr. Todd Maltby of Wholesale Patio Store LLC, explaining why we, as a staff, could not approve administratively the outdoor display area. But you said you're, you're willing to entertain that, and we think that the, the appropriate thing to do would be to, one, you can tie your approval to the specific floor plan, or plan that you have in front of you. You can limit it by square footage. You can limit it by the items being stored. So we had outlined for you on page four, that you could approve this particular conditional use permit application. You could approve it subject to specified conditions to the, to the plan that was presented. You could table the application. You could deny it. But if, if based on everything that you've heard today, we have thrown out two possible conditions, meaning that, that there couldn't be any alteration to the outdoor display area as presented to you today. Of course, the second condition is that the city commission has to agree with your recommendation, that the text should be amended before any conditional use permit could actually go into effect. But as we noted, if you wanted to have conditions addressing what portion of the 1,000 square feet available could be occupied by display, you could do so. If you want a condition or approval on the fact that the fence that's there remain, you could do so. If you want to limit it to the outdoor display of barbecue grills and other things that Mr. Maltby might identify, you could do that.
So, Mr. Maltby, there, there won't be any limited slip, independent rear suspension, disc brake differentials being displayed? It'll all be patio furniture and barbecues? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be all pertaining to outdoor entertaining items, maybe a fountain, if we decide to do that, but mainly, for now, it's barbecue grills and, and little outdoor kitchens. We have a modular one in there, but it'll look a lot nicer than that, once we actually get, get everything cleaned up, so...
It's all going to be new, or will it be new and used?
No, we don't sell anything used. Everything will be brand-new.
Everything new, and I think that's a good way to start.
Thanks.
Is it just a display area? It's not demonstration area, so these things aren't going to be...
Well, for right now, it's display only. The demonstrations, when we go live, we're going to, we're going to actually redo the entire courtyard, do a fully functioning kitchen, which we'll apply for a permit for, and do at that time, but at this time, it's just going to be display purposes, nothing functioning whatsoever. If we do anything functioning, it'd be a, like a pellet grill, or something that we plug in, and just for customers to use, but nothing with gas or anything at this time.
Propane?
Yeah, nothing, no. We don't want to do anything like that yet. But we will, once, if it gets approved, we want to do a fully functioning outdoor kitchen, courtyard, TV, heaters, misters, we're going to do it all. So hopefully, but later.
What's the ownership on the walls on either side?
Oh, I don't know. It's, it's just decay and rot, but that'll all get cleaned up and fixed, and it's going to be painted, too, and, and cleaned up. It's in, it hasn't been touched at all for, I don't know how long, 10 years, maybe? We've just been focusing on the inside of the store, redoing that all, and this has just been on the back burner, kind of, so just, no pun intended.
So do you own those walls on either side, or is that part of the property?
Well, I don't, I don't believe, that's one, that's a 111 lounge there. We, we own the building, 113. It has an apartment above and the basement, but I, I don't know who's in ownership of that particular wall. I believe that's them. Yeah, it's, it's kind of messed up. And there's a, there's a vent. I think they put in a bathroom without a permit, because that's actually a waste vent from a toilet, so they need to actually have that go up before we, I turn on any gas appliances. I want them to put that all the way up to the roof. Are we have any customers back there? It's supposed to be like two or three feet above the roof line. That's what we had to do when we did our bathroom remodel, so...
Yeah, if there's not a, if it's an independent wall holding up in a adjoining building, that wall belongs to the adjoining owner.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to recommend, when we do the courtyard, we're going to ask them, I'm sure they won't mind, and we're going to actually sandblast that, and then stucco it, or culture stone, and do some hanging gardens, and botanical gardens, and stuff, because, for like herb gardens, because what we want to do is film it, and, and do instructional videos, and have like private parties, or instruction classes with the public, and, and stuff like that, and entertaining kind of, kind of stuff, and, and video it. It'd be pretty fun.
If this is approved, though, Dean, it doesn't, it wouldn't necessitate a separate permit for him to be able to start using, at some point down the road, you know, propane devices for demonstration purposes, would it?
Well, what we're saying is that construction and use of the outdoor display area shall conform to the approved site plan and all applicable building and fire codes, so that's a recommended condition we have. It's just basically saying, if you're going to pipe gas here, or hook up appliances, or whatever, then they'll have to work with the, the fire department and others to, to meet all the, the fire codes for any, anybody else that would be having gas appliances. And so we attempted to address that with, with that condition. But that, that is the, that's the, the facts that we have in front of you are that the, the building footprint's 1,500 square feet, the outdoor area's approximately 1,000 square feet, the, the area is enclosed by a fence, and if, if you want to condition the fence remaining as, as part of the condition, you can. If you want to have a, only a certain percentage of 1,000 square feet available for display, you can. And if you want to say that it's limited to patio furniture and outdoor barbecue grills, you can.
Chairman, I'd make a motion if everybody's done.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
I would make a motion for application CU12-4 for the approval of display area for cooking grills, patio furniture, fountains, heaters, and that the back gate shall remain for screening, and that new items only shall be sold or stored in the back area. And I would also add to that the staff recommendations of number one and number two.
And this is subject to commission approval of application Z12-5.
Yes, the city commission would have to agree that they think it's a good idea.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item passes. Other matters? Thank you.
For other matters, it was asked, and Mr. Ryan can share his observations on that, but I wanted to share with the commission, since there've been a lot of different discussions around the community, the Salina Board of Zoning Appeals considered an application that was filed by Olive Garden Restaurants, and the request that they had is that because of drainage and runoff concerns in sensitive drainage areas, if you want to exceed the city's parking requirements by more than 25%, you have to apply for a variance to do that. And the Olive Garden restaurant chain did apply for that variance, and submitted a plan for building and parking on the lot that's directly north of First Bank, Kansas, at the corner of Sutherland Drive and South Ninth Street. That variance request and the plan was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it, it doesn't have a, a time limit on it. It's, is based on that plan and that piece of property. They have not acted on that by actually submitting a, a building permit under that plan, because they have not yet reached agreement with the current landowner on actually securing that property under their ownership to build. So they, they have a plan, they have identified piece of property that they'd like... So, they, they have a plan, they have identified piece of property that they'd like for their location, they submitted that to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and a public hearing was held on that in June, and their parking plan was approved, but they have not acted on that because they have not secured ownership of that parcel, which is, the entire subdivision there is 10 acres, and they don't need 10 acres for their site, so they're attempting to purchase a portion of that. And so, they, they submitted an application, it was a public hearing, and it was heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals in June, but no follow-up action has occurred since that time by the applicants. So that, that's where that stands as far as that BZA matter. But we, we have a, a plan and it was, it's, we have it on file and we're just waiting for them, if they choose to act on that.
Dean, is there any interest in that permeable paving surface at all for parking lots?
Well, we've tried to garner interest in that, but it is, one, it's, it's a more expensive product, and then, two, it, it does take a different skill set and equipment and all to actually establish it and, and construct it, and it's, it's not quite as smooth and, and level as the actual permanent pavement, but, you know, that, that's one of the things we've looked at because when you build more paved parking and it's impermeable surface, then you've gotta deal with whatever runoff comes off of that if it ever rains again.
I have, I have some items I'd like, and not tonight, but I mean, I'd like to just follow up on them because they, they come up once in a while, and that is the, the automotive agency that we approved a conditional use permit for Pacific and Santa Fe, and they were not to park on the grass, and now they've expanded and they're parking on the grass. That's one. Number two is a sign at the pawn shop that I thought was supposed to-
What am I, eat it, bend it, do what? Up? Is this a new system? And the, the sign that was up on the pawn shop across the street from City County Building, and, and I thought we determined that might come down, I believe. And then, the other one is a, a business that we denied their application to do business on Cloud Street, a restoration company or something because of lack of parking and landscaping and several things, and I think they may be doing business there, I'm just not sure.
They, they are doing business there, it is legal for them to do business there. What they were interested in and applied for at the time was to be rezoned to a commercial classification because the way it stands now, if that building were to burn down, they would lose their investment, they would not be able to, to build it back or use it. It, yes, they're, they're, it is a, it's a grandfathered-in building that was used for auto repair and similar businesses for a number of years, and so, their concern when they were interested in acquiring it was that we told them if anything happened to the building, that it would have to be torn down. As to Smokey's Auto Body-
Did they buy it? They're just leasing it then?
I'm, I don't know for sure whether they have it leased or purchased. The, the owner of the property lived in Florida, and I understood they had a contract to purchase it, but I'd have to check the actual deeds office. I think we're close, and it may be time to simply bring Smokey's Auto Body back, and again, which is something that we put up on the screen and tried to, to make clear that one thing about a conditional use is that you lay out the conditions of approval, and if they're not complied with, then the conditional use permit can be revoked. And so, we have, we have done that in some previous cases where basically, we, we called a show cause hearing, but basically, we would schedule a public hearing, the applicants would have a chance to appear, plus neighbors, and we would say, show why we should not revoke your permit. They, one of the things they were supposed to do is they were supposed to obtain a building permit before they put any paint booth in there, and they did not do that either, so we're, we're working with them on that matter. As to the pawn shop, we have communicated with Mr. Pangrind, given him a deadline, is that correct, John?
Yeah, there is a timeframe for him taking down the pole sign as well as installing the new wall sign.
Apparently, we haven't got to the last minute yet.
Roughly the first week of August.
I remember Commissioner Kennedy being very specific and asking the applicant if he understood, if Smokey's site, about where the parking was or not, and if he understood that he could park on the grass.
I've noticed that too.
Yeah, the, the major complaint we got there was that painting activity was occurring without a paint booth, and, and that, that is correct. So, we, we can move, we can move forward on that, and if that's an item of interest to you, you are certainly within your authority to simply revoke their conditional use permit, and that takes away that business from that location.
How many chances do you give them?
Well, we've, we've given them quite a few chances because they've still not submitted everything they need to obtain a permit for a paint booth, and they're, they're kind of dangling out there in no man's land right now.
Seems to be how things get grandfathered in over time.
Yeah, to be, to be grandfathered in, you have to be legal at some point in time, and they're, they haven't got there yet, so.
Do we need some formal action to direct staff to-
If there's a chance in the commission that that, they, you have driven by and they're not fulfilling what you expected, then what we would do is, is schedule a hearing and have them come back. And we would simply put it on your agenda, and you can decide if you'd like to revoke it or not. And if they don't have a valid conditional use permit, they don't have an auto body business.
Am I hearing a consensus that the commission, like, staff to move that way?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, why would we-
What are we sitting here, yeah?
No, I, I completely agree, that, that's the purpose of conditions, is to put parameters around how somebody operates in a particular place, so. We will meet on August the 7th, which is three weeks away from today, and at present, we have two public hearing items that are tied together just like this. One is, they are both for the west half of the former Uptown Motel Site, and there is a, a business from Oklahoma that is in the food distribution business, and they would like to purchase the west half of the former Uptown Motel Site and construct a warehouse building, and they would like to do it under C6 zoning that has paving and landscaping, which was the issue before when they were attempting to get I-2 zoning, so they wouldn't have to do paving and landscaping. So, that will be back before you on August 7th, and then we'll line up a schedule on Smokey's Auto Body.
I have just one quick thing. If we have the ability, and I don't know if we do, but if we have the ability to limit public comment to a, say, three or four minutes, I know many of the, these types of meetings I've been in before, I'm used to that, that kind of finite time that they have, and I think that it helps keep the meeting crisp, so you don't have four or five return trips to the podium. You know, you come up, you have your four minutes, you say your piece, and you're done at that point, and that's it. And if we have the ability to do that, I think that we should consider that, because sometimes I feel like some of the public comment gets a little sloppy.
Did you read, read the journal today about the county commission meeting?
Well, I heard about it.
Did you watch it? I watched it on television.
They had to bring the deputies in, they still didn't control the time, so.
Right, but I mean, you can-
I think you have to give everybody every opportunity to speak.
It's within the chairman's discretion to say, "Please, limit your remarks to X period of time," or, "Please, don't repeat what somebody else said," and we, we bend over backwards, but yes, you're technically correct, in the case of Mr. Riedel, you know, there, unless he's asked to come forward, he doesn't need to come up four different times or whatever, he can, he can say, you know, "Please, you're lim, you're limited to one trip to the podium unless one commissioner would like to ask him a question and get clarification on something."
All the other people did good.
But, yeah, I-
After Mr. Riedel's remarks, I felt that Mr. Houseon deserved a rebuttal, so, yeah.
You're gonna get limited how many times Riedel was able to come to the podium to begin with, I mean, that's all I'm saying, just keeps things a little bit more crisp and a little bit more orderly, I think, but it's just suggestions, just an observation on my, on my part.
And I, I do have-
My place and the chair is short, so.
We need a motion to adjourn, is that what we're doing?
I, I do have a plat for Mr. Ryan to sign before he exits, so, other than that, that's the only other business I have.